Keep things a little sane here and understand that there's nothing wrong with having a small building that has small theatrical events. It could even have little theater plays, one or two act plays in it or something. And I think if we add this to that, then we are going to allow small theater events or small entertainment, or however we put it, is going to occur anywhere in that C-3. It can occur in a house also. We're excluding religion from, we're not excluding religions from the C-3, just in that, because, you know, the Quakers could buy Emilio's and decide to have a Quaker meetings there, and that would be a religious thing, so that would be zoned against or something. We can get, we can over-regulate, we can get too carried away, we can over-intellectualize this. I mean, as a little building, it's good for little performances, so let's let little performances of whatever in the building and be done with it. That's the way I look at it.
Mr. Smith?
I agree with Mrs. Eller, and I can't distinguish sometimes this issue being more of a personalized issue towards the people involved versus what's going on. Gentlemen, ladies, it's the Upper Historic Loop, Old 62 Business Highway. I mean, it is not a quiet little residential street in Holiday Island. The Budweiser truck that services the restaurant and the hotel is huge.
Point of order. What's your point of order, Mr. DeVito? The point of order is we have a request to have the city attorney draw up an ordinance. These discussions and debates can occur when we have the ordinance before us.
Mr. Weaver, when can you have that done?
They directed it. It should be ready next time.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on.
Didn't we vote?
Yes.
No, we didn't vote on that.
No, we haven't voted on it yet. No, we have not voted on it yet. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to number five, is a resolution for Black Bass Dam.
Move to discuss.
Second?
Second.
Floor is open.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I'd just like to bring this forward here. I drafted this, shot it over to Mr. Weaver for his take on it, shot it to all the rest of the council. Basically, what this does is it just directs the finance director to establish an account for any money that we raise, either from private, public, whoever, corporate, to repair, improve, and maintain Black Bass Lake Dam. The intention here is, the reason I brought it forward as a resolution instead of a ordinance is that it's, this is temporary. We anticipate that we'll raise funds for a certain period of time, and that this will basically be defunded. And the intention here is that, you know, first part of this, we want to raise money, we want it to go to the city, we want the city to control it, we want to have a specific line item that does not allow it to be used for anything but the repair, maintenance, or improvement of Black Bass Dam. That way, it doesn't get commingled with any other city funds, and we can track it entirely. The intention is to raise that money. The first part of that money would be go towards planning and specifications, engineering studies first, plan and specifications to follow, and then we would move, so we'd step forward incrementally to do this. We wouldn't go, our target wouldn't be, oh, we have to have $400,000 here before we can do anything. If we get enough money in our account to go forward with engineering, then we'll, then the mayor, or actually, I think I directed, I have here, that the public works director can solicit an engineering firm. Part of our SOQs, we have statements of qualifications for mayors, for mayors, for engineering firms. And so we can, we can select from them or submit a request for qualifications. Also indicated that all invoices and purchase orders will be approved by either the mayor or the public works director of the city of Eureka Springs prior to payment. So I think this is a good idea. It takes it out of the hands of individuals, you know, puts it in the square with the city, and everybody will feel comfortable about that. And it also allows it to be tax deductible. Anything that you donate for this particular has to be donated specifically for Black Bass Dam. And we have two, we have two websites that we're developing right now, blackbassdam.org and blackbassdam.com. So those will be, they'll be linked to each other, they'll be linked to the city's website. I believe we can do that, Mr. Mayor, is that correct?
Yes.
And that way, it all can be interconnected. Everybody eventually gets to the city. We raise enough money to get the engineering done, and then we move forward with construction. Intention here really is that ultimately, we're hoping, we don't know, but we're hoping that we can raise funds with a broad base of concerns, people that come here and visit from all over the, all over the nation, sometimes all over the world. But also, we'd like to be able to get some, some city matching funds if, you know, if it's available, if or when it comes available. And that may be, part of that may be what the mayor had brought forward at our town hall meeting regarding the potential for increasing some of the fees for water and wastewater.
Mr. Weaver?
A move to assign this resolution a number and pass it by reading it?
Second?
Second.
Need further discussion on it? Mr. Smith?
It pretty well says here, donate, the money's donated to use to pay for the expenses, so pretty much the way it's written, the attorney, there is no way that the, this, other accounts will be used. It will just be exclusively this account. The wording in here is such that expenditures are, must come from this account, no other account, right? Okay. All right. I'll go with you.
City monies also.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Cloak, read the time limit.
Does this prohibit any city monies from going?
It doesn't prohibit city monies from being used in another manner, because the one word that I had you change and remove, I think, kind of did that, excluding city money. But this is covering only money, or is supposed to cover only money that is coming in through what is being raised. It's not supposed to be giving authority, broad authority, to use all the other city funds, too. It's just the funds that come into this account.
But is it prohibiting the use of city funds?
No. The idea is to not prohibit, if, I mean, if the city wants to put money in, too, from some other source, from the general fund or whatever, it can.
The resolution number will be 626. A resolution directing the finance director of the city of Eureka Springs to establish an account for any monies raised or donated for the repair, improvement, and maintenance of Black Bass Lake Dam. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, in an effort to protect and to deliver, protect the delivery of up to 70% of the city's water supply provided by a lift station located immediately below Black Bass Dam, to protect life and property, and to conserve the unique recreational amenity provided by the lake impounded by Black Bass Dam, desires to repair, improve, and maintain Black Bass Dam. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Eureka Springs that Section 1, Finance Director of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, be directed to establish an account for any monies raised or donated to be used to pay for any expenses related to the repair, improvement, and maintenance of Black Bass Lake Dam. Section 2, all monies accumulated in the Black Bass Dam account shall be used exclusively to pay for all expenses related to the repair, improvement, and maintenance of Black Bass Dam. Section 3, invoices and purchase orders will be approved by either the mayor or the public works director or the city of Eureka Springs of the city of Eureka Springs prior to payment. Section 3, typical expenditures may include but are not limited to the following, engineering analysis and design of repairs and improvements of Black Bass Dam, engineering bid phase and construction phase services, construction of repairs and improvements, long-term maintenance of the dam, expenses relating to maintaining the following fundraising websites, blackbassdam.org and blackbassdam.com, any other related improvements or expenses that may be determined to be appropriate by the mayor or the public works director of the city of Eureka Springs.
Good.
What was that number again, please?
626.
26.
626.
Oh, 626?
Yeah.
Yes. I thought it was 666.
All right, let's try it again.
626.
That's what I had to choose from, nobody else.
Move this on to number six, which will be discussion in November city council meeting dates.
Move to discuss. Second?
Go ahead.
Floor is open. Mr. Weaver?
I'd like to give thanks to have one meeting in November.
I think it's been protocol for a while.
Last year, there were, what, the second Monday in November? There were two and two special meetings.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, it has been traditional until recently. November and December, city council has one meeting each month because of the holidays in late November and in December. The reason I had this put on the agenda was because normally, we would be meeting the second Monday of November, that would probably be our only meeting, but that's Veterans Day. And while I realize we can open up this building and all of us meet, that's not appropriate or cool. So we have to decide, and believe me, time is running out. We need to decide we're going to have one meeting or two. If we're going to have two, that would end up being like Monday the 4th and Monday the 25th. Don't ask anybody to show up on Monday the 18th, that's BB King. Veterans Day is, like I said, not appropriate. So we can either do our traditional one time during the month, or pick different weekdays to meet if we're going to do two. But we have to decide this.
I understand Ms. Snyder's connections with veterans, but it's not a national holiday, so I don't see any reason why we shouldn't meet.
Ms. Snyder, are you leaving the table?
Only until I get calmed down.
Ms. Snyder, Ms. Snyder, sit down! Thank you.
Tell them to have some appropriate Americans. Yeah, well, I'm sorry, that pisses me off. Is this open on 11? No.
Ms. Snyder, you're out of order. Mr. McCrory?
I would like to see us meet on the 4th and 25th. There may be enough things going, enough to do with the budget and all that, because two meetings may be necessary. I don't, certainly don't mind having two meetings in November. I love being with you people. I enjoy it. Great, isn't it?
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Second.
Okay. Are you clear on the motion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we have those dates again, please, sir?
Fourth and 25th.
Fourth and the 25th.
When's Thanksgiving, the 23rd or 28th? Oh, it's late this year.
Nothing further on that issue, we move to number seven, group tour franchises. Smitty is here to address it, motion to discuss.
So I move.
Second?
Second.
Floor is open. Ready? Mr.? You're up.
I believe you have before you a proposed ordinance. Yeah, that's, that 2146 is the, old one expires December 15th, I believe, this year. In this new ordinance, there are two changes I would like proposed to the council. First of all, I'd like to change the percentages for the individual tours. There were 60/40. I would like to move those 65/35. Two reasons for that change is basically money. Trams are old. I've come to you before, and we've talked about trams. Hopefully, this council sees fit in the 2014 budget to either buy and/or rebuild the trams. If that is the case, I would, I wouldn't mind going back to 60/40. At this point, the trams are costing a lot of money. For instance, last Friday, we had to buy a $500 part for the tram. We have only one tram right now until we receive that part, and then, then we install it and have two trams again. And this is not going to get any better, honest. Secondly, when this, when the franchise came into being in the late 90s or mid 90s, there were four franchises, and actually, the number of group tour riders exceeded the individual riders. Through the years, as we lost our bus tour business and tourism has dropped, that number has started to come apart, come and spread unequally. This year, it looks like individual rides are up 14%. Last three years, in 2011, we had 64 tour groups. In 2012, we had 54. This year, if all the groups who have reserved show up, don't cancel, and none are more put in, we're going to have 51. So the, the spread between the individual groups and individual riders and the group riders is becoming larger, which means Transit is receiving less funds from the franchises, and we're putting out more funds to the franchises. So far this year, between the two franchises, we have paid them over almost $16,000. And they've brought in to us about $3,000. So it's getting, where we're putting out a lot more funds than really we can afford. And that's the one change I made. The other change is allowing the, the franchises to sell individual group tickets. They actually collect the money, give the person a voucher, and they come, and then they would get the 60/40 split, they would get the larger in, because basically doing all the work, in my opinion. That's another change I've made, but they would have to basically pay the sales tax. We do pay city tax, sales tax, tourism tax, state tax on the tour group bills. Those are two changes I propose on the new ordinance.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Smitty, is this going to help the franchises to, to bring more people here, or is it going to be a hindrance? I'm, I'm, I want to be sure, as we take little bites here and there, a little bite, are we going to raise the parking rate, and let how many people reserve a space? To, are we going to close Spring Street for this? Are we going to collect tax for this? As we take these little pieces here and there, I'm wondering what we're doing with the big picture. Are we, in essence, accentuating and helping promote tourism, or are we possibly hindering it and hurting it? When you look past this system that we have here in Eureka Springs, and I consistently hear from merchants, not so much lodging or restaurants, but I hear from merchants selling merchandise, that the revenue isn't that swift. It's a little down. I hear a little bit the CAPC's down. Then you, then it doesn't take a rocket scientist to read the newspaper and realize that Walmart and Macy's and Target, and that's our, kind of our customers, is that group that shop there, you know, and they're not flying into our airport in their private Lear jets like Aspen, you know, that's not the group we're getting here. So if all of those places are down, and the consumer that goes there is hurting a little bit, and you look at the CAPC, I would hate to think that we do something that, in essence, will start hindering our tourism.
Right. Joe and I have been having discussions about this. Joe does a great job promoting the tours. He has a website dedicated to tram tours. And, you know, and he has said, you know, he's doing all this, doing all this, doing all this, and basically, we're taking money from him. I totally understand that, you know. But at the same point, you know, I'm losing money because his trams are costing me so much. And basically, the bus, I was talking to Mike Bishop today, you know, the music shows are hurt from the bus tours not being here. You know, the Passion Play is hurt from the bus tours not being here. I'm sure Joe and the other franchises is hurt because bus tours don't want to come here. Number one, they don't feel welcome here. Last year, for instance, Joe might speak to this, we stopped the tour buses and go around the courthouse because this parking lot over here looks kind of weak. Joe started getting calls pretty much right away, wondering why we were stopping tour buses and coming downtown. I mean, they talk to each other, and when a tour group doesn't feel welcome here, they tell other tour groups. And, you know, I would like us to bring tour groups back, but at the same point, we have the large vehicle ordinance, which says they can't go on the loop. And, you know, we're in a rock and hard place right there.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Smitty, two things. We'll just put a little bookmark right there on that large tour bus thing. But the first thing, what is your relationship, what is Transit's relationship with the tour guide business, with Mr. Gunnels?
The franchises, to have a, the franchise, what it says is they bring their groups, they can use city-owned vehicles to bring their groups around town. There's only two groups who can use trams. That's Joe Gunnell's Tours, and that's Making Memories Tours. Michelle, if she had a large group, would have to go to Joe or Jerry if they, she wanted to use the trams, because only those two franchises are to use trams. So basically, that's our relationship, and this came out of the large vehicle ordinance. So when these tour groups would come to town, they had a way to go around the historic loop, because anything over 30 feet can go on the loop.
Okay. And the second part of my question was, what fomented the rebellion against buses in Eureka Springs?
I can explain that to you.
The size of them, at the time, the black smoke from them, which doesn't exist anymore, because 2010 EPA, all, you know, all commercial vehicles had to step up and get rid of that black smoke. You know, I've heard people say that they come downtown, they don't spend any money. Well, they eat in restaurants, they stay in hotels, they, they spend money.
What would preclude this table from saying, allowing tour buses to come back to the city?
Again, that's up.
Or to encourage them?
That's up, that's up to you. Now, what we have done at Transit, we can give a permit to a bus to go to the Crescent Hotel, if they're staying there or eating there. And also, we can give a permit to a bus to come to the Basin Park Hotel, come up Hillside to drop off passengers who are staying at the Basin Park Hotel. We could, if you wanted to extend that by permit, they can do the loop, but we have to know about it ahead of hand, ahead of time, and let the police know ahead of time, so they know this bus is coming through.
I just want to continue with this line of questioning, just, and it's intimately related to what you're talking about, the tram here. So do we currently allow, I've seen tour buses here on the courthouse parking lot upon occasion.
Yeah.
Is it just that, because it's a relatively small group of commercial businesses and business owners, and they've said, hey, don't go to Eureka Springs, they ran us out of there at some point in time?
Basically, they talked to them.
So they talk to each other, and that's what's happened over time?
Jill, step up to the mic, please, introduce yourself. That actually, that scenario doesn't happen very much anymore. It did happen back in the mid 90s. Joyce was on a committee along with me and James and several others. And it was, you know, and I, I know I'm not repeating this to this council, but I've said it to other councils, but in 1993, Joe Gunnell's Tours did 1,100 local tours of Eureka Springs. There were no trams, those were all on motor coaches touring through the historic loop, 40 and 45-foot motor coaches, 1,100. And as Smitty just said, last year, whatever Transit log was, 54 groups or something like that. I did my counts today, and I think, I think I did 52 groups last year. That's what my records show for last year, that we're good, solid groups. Mr. Varner did last year something like four groups, from what I understand, six, something like that. So those numbers are grossly under what they were back in 1993. But there was a lot of bad press that went out about groups in Eureka Springs. This, this is kind of lengthy, but, you know, Joyce will remember, and some others will, that there was an actual letter sent out by the city that, that was just misworded. And it put out a message that motor coaches were not allowed in the historic district anywhere, period, end of story. It was that kind of thing.
We're getting far afield from what the topic is here. If you would like a tutorial on that, we spent nine months on that committee to draft what we should be talking about right now, which is the trams.
Okay.
And I suggest, because there are other items that I would like to address, and one of them is, what I find to be inequitable, is that Joe, who is bringing 10 times more tours than the other operator, has to share with that other operator. Now, I think that's patently unfair. Now, if we want to address issues like that, I think that's germane to our discussion right now.
Okay. Go forward, sir.
Could I say one thing?
Yeah.
I just wanted to kind of correct something that Smitty said a while ago. He said that I felt like that I was, that they were taking money away from me. That's not correct. I don't feel that the city's taking money away from me, the city should. What I feel like is that Making Memory Tours is taking money away from my efforts, because they are getting rewarded for my efforts to sell individual tours, not group tours. He makes his own money on his group tours, I make mine, but on individual efforts, and that's where I have a problem.
Mr. Smith?
Smitty, not to belittle what you've done here, and I think it's great, but this council is new, and Mr. DeVito's blatant dismissal of some of us here at the table trying to get educated on the topic, I resent. And you can get pissed if you want, I don't really care, but I do resent it. I would like to see an opportunity to explore this a lot more, and with some other outcomes besides getting this fixed. I'd like to see what we can do to encourage tourism, make it more welcome for the tour buses, and in essence, increase revenue so that the, that the businesses downtown and everybody will reap what this town's industry is, and that is tourism.
Right.
So therefore, I, I would make a motion that we continue this discussion or move it to a workshop.
Mr. McCrory?
Okay, so we're, I can still discuss?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the CAPC is taking a very strong and active role in trying to attract more buses. Now, Karen has made numerous, numerous trips to different shows and all where the buses to lure the bus traffic, a lot more than in the past, and, you know, we're actively seeking that, that market again. The thing that, so, you know, we're doing what we can do. The other thing is I haven't got a handle, really, on how much money you're talking about, at least on, on changing these fees.
It's going to be 75 cents per rider.
No, I mean, I mean, an annual income, annual. No, I mean, I mean, an annual income, annual, you know, what's it going to be? What's it going to generate? If you'd have done it last year, what would it have generated?
For me, yeah.
2,000?
No, about 6,000. I think I ran the numbers on it earlier, about $6,000. If I can return what Mr. DeVito said, now, there is provision in the ordinance that if you feel you should only have one franchise, that's up to you to decide that.
So, you hold your hand up.
Okay, as I see it, we have two problems here. The remuneration to the tour group people, and the problem that you're not getting enough money to maintain your trams. Okay, now, the money to maintain the trams, you should be getting, you should be getting that money from your take on the, on the tickets that you sell for the trams. So if there isn't enough money there, the answer to that is to raise your price, 5%, 10%?
We raised our price last year to 15.
Okay, what does it cost to ride the tram? And what I don't understand is, who, if a tourist comes and wants to take a tour in the tram, and Joe hasn't booked a group in here, who does the tour for the people who walk in, who does the walk-in trade?
The franchises provide the tours, tour guides.
You do that too? You have somebody to do that?
That's the arrangement.
Okay, so your income comes from bringing groups in and from doing the walk-in trade of people who want the tours?
Our percentage of the individual tickets.
Okay, and does this memories person, does he have somebody here who also does tours for the walk-in trade?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
They do seven days at a time. We run tours seven days a week, twice a day.
Okay, so it seems to me that the person who is bringing the tour groups in, who's booking the groups like Joe, they should be getting the revenue from that, and the ones that are sharing the walk-in trade, they should be getting your 60% split here. Is that the way it works now?
That's the way it works, yeah.
Okay, because Joe certainly should be getting all of the money for the tours that he books. This other person should not be getting any of that money.
No, they don't share the tour, that they, they book a group, it's his money.
Okay.
Okay, it's just the individual tours, basically, in the month, we say, we've had this many tour people, we split it in half.
Well, then, where does the disparity come? Does this, the, does Mr. Varner not do as many tours as Joe does?
He does not.
He does not?
No.
Okay, so, he should only get paid for the tours that he does?
We'd have to revisit, you know, how, how we, how we split that, that funds up. That'd be more book even on our part. Now, he, he does get funds from the tours he brought us, but he does provide a guide seven days a week to provide a tour guide for the individual tours.
But whoever is doing the walk-in trade, they should get paid for the number of tours that they do, so much per tour. And if Joe does more than he does, then Joe should get more money than he does.
Well, actually, basically, they do the even number amount, because they both do, they do seven-day stints. They start on Friday, they go to Thursday. And then Joe will do Friday to Thursday, then Jerry's group will do the Friday and Thursday. So they do the same number amount of tours. It all depends on what the walk-up tour is.
Where does the unfairness come in then?
What comes in, what comes in where the individual groups are really going up while the bus tour groups are going down. So Transit is actually paying more out, because we don't have as many tour groups coming in to offset overpaying for the individual groups.
But the person who's bringing the tour group in gets paid that, that money?
Yes.
That he doesn't have to share it with the other man?
No.
Somehow, I'm not seeing the problem here.
Might Joe make his point here on, on the inequity, on sharing the revenues?
Well, to answer Joyce kind of directly, my issue is fairness, I guess, and equitability. When I'm bringing 90% of the group business to the franchise, or to the, to the, to the Transit Department, to the city, first of all, those trams exist, number one and foremost, for motor coaches, not individuals. The individual tram tours was a second thought, it was an afterthought that Charles Fargo presented to us franchises at that time. So anyway, but, so my, my thing is, according to, in the email I sent to, to everyone, I don't know who got it and who didn't, but to reference the ordinance to 4.20.03, the number of franchises, and it says in times when ridership and/or cost of operations do not warrant the issuance of more than one. You all have the authority to keep two franchises, or reduce it down to one. One of them is doing 90% of the business, that yes, I get to, I keep my portion of the tram tour bus groups that I book. But the individuals, it's split evenly with someone, another company that's not bringing any group business, or hardly any group business to the table, and yet, they can just equally, you know, have a tour guide show up seven days a week, every other week, and take the money home. And I just don't find that fair. And I think, I've asked that you guys consider, you, you ladies and gentlemen, to consider changing it to one franchise for another two years and see what's happening at that time. That's what I've asked.
Might I remind council that a different council two years ago, when faced with this issue, was told that the other franchise holder would bring all these bus tours to town, and that's why we allotted that second franchise. History has not proven that to be the case. So we have a motion on the table to take this to a workshop. We can be here till midnight discussing this issue, because it is very complicated.
Let me bring up two things. Franchise used to be four, and the reason we want the two is basically because two franchises were not bringing groups to town. They were just basically showing up, doing individual tours, and getting their split of that. So that's why we want the two. Okay, there's a precedent for you. As far as funding goes, they are 60%, you know, I have to worry about federal funding. And the federal funding says I have to find a match for, you know, the 80% or the 50% that they provide for me. And if I didn't have the trams, tram funds to do that, I would be coming up short. And I, we talked about this before, in that, you know, because of the trams, basically because of the trams, I don't have to come to council for my operating expenses. And, you know, the more money I use to fix the tram, the less money I can use to go toward my operations. So that's that.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito's right. Can we take this to workshop and hash it out, please?
We have a motion on the floor to continue...
Discussion or...
Discussion, or to move...
Or...
Or to move to workshop, okay. So that's, that's actually a two-part motion, so you need to break it down to one motion.
I did. You made a two-part motion?
No.
I understood your motion to be, a motion to continue discussion or move to a workshop.
I, I meant my motion to move it to a workshop.
Okay. That'll be the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 And you post, move to a workshop. We'll set a date. All right. Number eight's been postponed, motion number nine, discussion ordinance 2179.
Motion to discuss.
Second. Board's open.
We recently had an event in which a citizen, at the time, was placed on planning by nomination of the mayor and by vote of city council. And subsequent to that, at some point, this person became a city employee, and I'm not too sure of the events that have transpired, except that that person is now no longer on the planning commission, and whether, and it is a fact, I guess the person resigned. How or why they resigned, and under what communication took place with them, I'm not too sure. However, the word that came to me was that the interpretation of this ordinance holds the fact that, that now since that citizen is a city employee, they're no longer eligible, and which I found to be interesting. So I went back, and which I love YouTube now, to April the 8th, Part 1, timestamp 41.52 seconds, first reading of ordinance 2179. Mr. Perkepile, after we do it, turns to our city attorney and specifically queries him on, does that mean that employees of Public Works, EMT, et cetera, can serve on planning? And his, the answer from our city attorney was yes. Again, timestamp 41.52, Part 1, April the 8th. Now, I don't know what's changed since then, but the little bits of email I got was that the city attorney says that no employee can't, and therefore, the city clerk then somehow interjects herself into this process and gets the, the employee to resign. So I don't understand how a person that is nominated for a commission by the mayor and voted on by the city council can be asked to resign by the city clerk, and then also what happened with the ordinance that I thought was allowing one employee and at least one municipal officer. So then I looked up definitions of municipal office, and it has somebody that's elected, I'm, I'm confused. So I'm going to ask the city attorney, what changed from the day of April the 8th, when Mr. Perkepile specifically asked you the question, and you gave him an answer to when this happened? Why the difference?
I don't think anything has changed.
Well, then...
Now, I don't know why the particular employee resigned from the planning commission. Okay? I was asked a question a couple of weeks ago by the clerk in a phone call, and if there was a miscommunication between myself and the clerk, I had certainly apologized for that, but what I understood the conversation is just to be, you cannot be an appointed official in this town, or an elected official in this town, and serve except for the spot that is referenced in the ordinance. But being a citizen of the town, if you otherwise qualify, to sit on the commission, you could still work for the city. But you better not be the city council member, unless it's the one allowed, or you better not be a commissioner with the Parks Commission.
Okay.
But if you want to be an employee of the Parks Commission that plants flowers, I don't know what the problem is.
I'm not too sure what it is either, but we have...
So I think it's the same opinion that I gave Mr. Perkepile that day at the table. Thank you, sir.
Well, then, I would like to redirect my next question to the city clerk, and ask, would she mind explaining how it is that a city employee and a sitting commissioner on planning very clearly was asked to resign?
Well, it is not really your position to say he was very clearly asked to resign because you were not there, did not hear the conversation, so you're making a very inappropriate assumption. I did read the ordinance to Mr. Luhon on the phone when he told me he had taken employment with Parks, and we talked about the language. I called the city attorney.
Where is that?
I understood him to say, an official, excuse me.
Where is that?
I said, is a municipal office or appointment an employee? Something to that effect. He said, no, they're, they're separate. And having recalled an incident where the city got itself in a jam interpreting an employee as an elected official, I thought, okay, let's, let's go slowly here, because an, someone serving in an office by being elected or appointed is not the same. That's why I called the attorney and asked him. I understood him to say that an employee, it would not be appropriate. So I talked with Mr. Luhon, and he said to me that he had some points he wanted to make at the particular planning meeting, and that he would resign at the end of the meeting. So we went along, went along, I did the, I listened to the planning meeting, and I thought, um, maybe I missed something. So I called him up, and the timing was probably not very good, because he had just begun his new job, and rather than making a time to talk about it later, looking back on it, what I think happened was, he expressed his intent to resign, he got to the table, he was informed by a particular person on the planning commission, who shall we name, remain nameless for right now, that, oh, no, that's not correct, you don't have to resign. So he didn't. I think what happened was that he was embarrassed. And when I called him and asked him, did I miss it, did you resign? His response was, he was embarrassed. And so, our exchange at that point was taken to be something other than what it really was. And so this whole series of emails went out that were really exaggerated. I wanted to make it clear, I appreciated having Mr. Luhon on planning. I valued him being on planning. I have no vendetta. It was the language in the ordinance that was the sticking point for me, which is why I called the attorney, sought clarification before I talked to anyone about it. And I'm sorry that it was taken out of, I'm sorry that it was an awkward situation for him, and that was not my intention. I, and I said, if it's not right, bring it back to the table and fix it. I just want the ordinance to be right and clear, and that was my only intention. If he comes back on planning, I will be thrilled, because he is an asset. And if we had a misunderstanding, we had a misunderstanding, and everybody who is involved in the communication is equally responsible, not just the attorney, not just the clerk, not just the former commissioner, hopefully, maybe even commissioner in the future.
Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Yes. Email from Pat Luhon to all the city commissioners, a very short message to all of you from Ann, sounds like I chose to resign off planning, but Ann told me I was breaking state law and was very upset...
Yes, it is a problem.
That at the planning meeting...
What's your point?
Personnel matters.
This isn't personnel.
This isn't a personnel matter, it's a commissioner matter. It's very clearly...
He works for the city.
It was a planning commissioner issue.
Commissioner at the time.
When that email went out, he wasn't an employee.
Board, please. Mr. Weaver, if he's a commissioner, he's not an employee, is that correct? He is, he is appointed.
He is an appointed official of the city, yes.
Okay. So at the time he sent this email, was he an employee or a commissioner?
He may have been both. I'm not sure when it was sent.
Yeah.
He probably was both, from my gathering of what I've read today.
September 4th.
I, I don't know exactly when, when everything took place. I didn't get it in real time, guys.
Well, I believe Mr. Luhon is here, so if anyone wants...
We'll ask him to the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apparently, he can do both. So, let's just put it back the way it was and, and go on with it. I mean, let's not embroil ourselves in this kind of a discussion, and let's work together and be done with it, and get back to it, the business at hand. I don't like this one bit, not one bit.
You have to...
Ms. Snider, you're next.
Well, since Mr. Luhon showed up, why don't we just let him speak his piece at the mic in regards to this discussion?
Not necessary, not necessary. If he's willing to serve.
Yeah, and... Pat, are you willing to serve again?
Not once.
Oh, well, we'd love to have you on it. You know, so the question is, Mr. Mayor, how do we do that? Do we need another application from him and bring it to this table?
You need to be addressing him.
Mr. Attorney.
At this point, if he's making his expression that he wants to be on... At this point, if he's making his expression that he wants to be on, he's going to have to comply with whatever the mayor requires as far as an application, whether the mayor will accept the application he's already presented, that's fine, I think, if he wants to. Then if the mayor nominates him, then this council can reinstate him to the seat or put him in the seat.
We can't just refuse the resignation?
No. He, the resignation doesn't go to you, it goes to the mayor's office.
Why, he can't refuse it?
Well.
I think it's probably too late to do that.
It'd be easier.
Okay, the way I read this, and this is on the point, James, so not to be excited. The way I read this is that two people on the planning commission can hold any other municipal officer appointment. Okay? That's, I'm just turning the sentence around. That's what you're saying. If you diagram this sentence, that's also what it says. Okay, now, my question is, can an employee of the city serve on the planning commission or any city commission?
As far as the requirements of that ordinance, yes, they can.
Okay, then do we need to add a clause to this saying employees can serve on commissions? No?
I don't think so.
No.
This is only a planning. This, this.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify this so that we don't get into this again.
The legislative history of this particular ordinance, the way I understand it, and I think clearly read by Mr. Mitchell a little bit ago, was that the intent of council when they passed this was to provide, to get extra people onto planning, potentially a council member or someone who was serving on another commission.
Yeah.
Which were, at the time, restricted from doing it. But there was not a restriction on hourly or other employees of the city.
Okay, so then we're done with this, right?
Yes. No, we're not done with this.
Oh, we're not? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Luhon, be reinstated.
Second.
On the planning commission.
Think you have to have a nomination.
We have, okay. Would you like to do that?
Do we have a nomination, Mayor?
Let's, let's go back to the basics here. Mr. Luhon has already resigned. I would like for Mr. Luhon to make another application that we'll put it before the council in the next meeting and then y'all can vote on it.
Can you accept his old, his old one, just write it?
I can.
Could you make?
Can we do it today since our meeting's tomorrow?
You accept that one present?
I guess basically, Mr. Luhon, would you take the position back if it was offered to you?
Yes.
Okay. I accept your old application and that puts you back on. Questions?
I move to accept the nomination of Patrick Luhon for the planning commission.
I second that.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Luhon, you're back on. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Not to, not to be crazy about this.
Not to be a lawyer.
But technically, you probably needed to amend the agenda because the agenda was the discussion of the ordinance, not to reappoint.
Good for you.
Mr. DeVito.
I move to gen, amend the agenda to allow the nomination of Patrick Luhon to the planning commission.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Now it's official.
Retroactive, please.
Thank you.
She's kidding.
All right, move. Motion's on to number 10, table protocol. Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Is there a second?
Second. What are we doing?
The last one.
Board's open.
Am I going to regret that?
Go ahead.
Um, I only want to make one point request requirement, however this thing works out. When ordinances and resolutions and everything are being read by whomever is reading them at any given time, proper protocol is you read it, period, the way it is. You don't stop and question wordage. You don't say, well, this can't be right or that doesn't make sense. You read it. If you have a question on wordage later, that can be discussed later or in private. But the one thing I want to remind people of, legalese is not plain English. You don't have to understand it, you don't have to get it, it doesn't have to make sense. It's legalese, it's its own language. Ergo, you read an ordinance as written and that's it.
Your discussion?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Agenda setting. Mr. DeVito.
I would like to initiate a discussion at the next council meeting of limiting CUPs in R1.
Second.
I'll second that.
Anything else? Okay, nothing else? Mr. McClung.
My hand is here.
Why don't, he's going around the table, Cole.
Oh, I thought you were asking for any, okay.
He will.
No. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I do have something and, and I don't know if this needs to go on the agenda or if it's something that can be addressed to you and, and Public Works, but crosswalks on Main Street, uh, here and the other side of the street there at Spring Street and the one down from the Grand Central need to be painted. And also I thought it might be good to add an additional one there at the, at where the stairs come down next to the New Delhi and run one across the street there because that is very heavily traffic back and forth there.
Okay.
And if another crosswalk could be painted there. So I don't know if that needs to be an agenda item or.
Um, Lee, we can take care of that just in the morning at our department meeting.
Okay.
I think she's the better at doing it.
That'd be hunky-dory.
All of them exist except the one in it.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think that's a decision y'all can make on your own as far as that
need goes. I would appreciate that very much.
Anything else?
Other than that, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Mitchell.
Uh, no, nothing.
Mr. Perkepile.
I don't have anything.
Ms. Snyder.
I forgot.
Um, I believe Bruce from Parks wanted us to add a discussion of the land bank, land bank on our next, at our next meeting.
Put it back on?
Yeah, he said that they are working on stuff right now and will be ready for us to discuss September 23rd at that meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Put your hand.
Second.
Okay. All right.
Just press.
Anything else, Ms. Snyder?
No, he missed one.
I forgot something for planning that I had promised and that was a discussion on multifamily housing and that Ed Lesswick is going to explain it. And it was on the list of things that they've asked us to bring forth and I totally spaced it out.
Multifamily housing?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Licenses for multifamily housing.
Second.
Is that all you wanted on Beverly? Multifamily housing? Excuse me. Come here.
Quiet commercial restrictions.
Okay.
Mr. Perkepile, you didn't have anything. Ms. Snyder, is there a land bank?
No, I think we covered it.
Yes, planning would also like restrictions on C3. Restrictions on what?
Quiet commercial.
Quiet commercial. The ones that discussion of restrictions on C3 quiet commercial zoning.
Is that it? Anybody else before we go to council comments? All right. Mr. DeVito, you're up.
Well, I'm sorry that I was questioned on my respect for men in service in the uniform. My father was a colonel in the army, served in World War II and the Korean War. First 20 years of my life were spent going from military base to military base. There's nobody has more respect for the uniform than I do and I take great exception to that being questioned at this table. I'm sorry to have to deal with this topic.
Is that it?
That's it.
Mr. McClung.
Uh, I just wanted to wish my son, Andrew, happy 25th birthday today. He's serving in the Coast Guard.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mitchell.
I want to congratulate council and everybody here because no matter how emotional we can be about a topic and how much difference we have, we still manage to keep a high level of civility and that's good.
Ms. Snyder.
Hi.
High level, huh?
High level.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes. Um, well, since James went ahead and brought it up, I wasn't going to, I will. Federal holiday or not, we owe all veterans everything we have and that we stand for for all time. To cavalierly say, well, it's not a federal holiday so we can meet is wrong. This office is closed, banks are closed. I don't know if it's considered Thanksgiving or Christmas type or if they just do it, but I'm sorry, yes, I blew up. And I'll blow up again when it comes to something like that because we owe them for hundreds of years. Therefore, no, a mere council meeting does not take precedence. That's the way I feel. And that's it.
Ms. Snyder.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, it brings it to me.
You got, left me out.
Mr. Perkepile, you said no. I'm sorry. If I did, my bad. Go ahead.
I don't know what echo you were listening to. No, I, I just wanted to bring up the discussion of, you know, parking's a big thing here. And, and I know Mr. DeVito's brought this up before, but I think we, I think we really need to consider some form of a parking garage that the, that the city, that the city owns. And, and we could really extend, you know, with three or four levels of parking, we could really improve our, our, you know, the number of people that we, we provide parking spaces to, really help the businesses. And it might cut down on some of the angst we have with some of the open space around the courthouse. Although it will take out two, probably two parking spaces, I mean, two parking lots, whatever we did. But I think we need to open up that dialogue at some point in time.
Again.
All right. I want to make a comment about the Veterans Day. Being a veteran and having worn the uniform of the United States Army, I feel like I have done my part to, to make this kind of government work. When I took the oath of office to make this kind of government work, I anticipated doing stuff I didn't think was appropriate. I think it's very appropriate that we have it on Veterans Day or any other holiday, as long as it forwards the city business. So that's what I just got to say about it. Now, moving on. September 11th through the 14th, sixth annual scooter, scooting at the Ozark Rally. September the 13th through the 15th, Jazz Yurica. 14th is the Second Saturday Gallery Stroll. 14th is Spirewood Jower Concert. 18th through the 21st, Boxed Blues Barbecue. 2021st, be the Yurica Springs Motorcycle Art Show in the gym, the bottom of the auditorium. Also, I'll let you know that the bid for the North Main Restroom has been awarded to HDI Incorporated out of Harrison, Arkansas for $44,850. That's all I have. Motion to dismiss.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're out of here.
Morris, HDI.